...16th meeting of the With County Board Supervisors to order. And note, we do have a quorum. We have Alan Wilder, Sunny Hills Community Church here to do our invocation. Everybody please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear God, certainly we come before you today as a thankful people. Lord, thank you for With County, Virginia, beautiful place to live and work and serve. Lord, thank you for those pioneers so long ago who saw the beauty and the potential, and they had the vision to perceive what could be here. And then, Lord, for others through the years who have carried forth what this community could be and become. Lord, thank you for our grandfathers and grandmothers who have handed down traditions and ideals to our parents, who then handed them to us. And, Lord, I pray that you'd help us be faithful stewards of that community spirit as we deal with our own children and grandchildren. Lord, thank you for our homeowners and landowners, our business owners and industries who support this community. Thank you for our helping agencies, for the hospital, for the police force, the sheriff's department, firefighters, rescue squads. Lord, we live in a wonderful place where people are so eager to help and to serve. And, Lord, these supervisors standing here this morning are numbered among those who are ready and eager to serve. So, Lord, bless them as they conduct business today. Lord, help them to be good stewards of what has been entrusted to them. Lord, give them wisdom. Help them to know when to say yes and when to say no, and when just to think about it a little bit longer. Father, you are a good, loving God. And again, we thank you for your presence amongst us. And, Lord, we pray you would work through it in us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone. We'll move right into our agenda. We have citizens' time. Mr. Myers has two subjects to speak about.
Yes, I was concerned about the brush disposal at the transfer stations. I was wondering if you have that under consideration? I've gotten a lot of telephone calls, people saying, "Oh, I couldn't empty my truck, and I'll just go to the National Forest and dump it." And I'm like, "Oh, my God." So, are you guys working on that? You have any, anything forthcoming today, resolution?
We don't have a resolution, but we are working on it.
Okay, so I can tell people something will happen in a positive fashion, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Okay, all right. We've got a road project going on over in Speedway, on St. Peter's Road. It's like the road to nowhere.
That's an interstate project, not a road.
Oh, my God, it's absolutely, it's excessive, it's ridiculous, it's, they're moving a mountain, and, I mean, we have roads, Sharon Drive, where a number of houses, we've got roads that need repair, and they're doing this major, major thing. Well, they've started it now, and I'm sure they're gonna have, they have to complete it, but in the future. I mean, we need somebody with a little common sense to look at some of this stuff they're proposing and say, "No, it's a little bit unnecessary because we could be doing a whole lot more with those resources than moving a mountain and putting in this road to nowhere." Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Linda. That's the only one that's signed up. Would anybody else like to speak during citizens' time? Here and then, we'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting of April 12, 2016. I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve the minutes of the April 12 meeting. Any corrections or changes?
Mr. Chairman, it's the 12th and the 20th.
12th and the 20th? Any corrections or changes? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And chair votes, aye. Next item is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
I'll make a motion to pay the invoices.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any invoice any board member would like to discuss or pull out? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 And chair votes, aye. Okay, moving right along to all business. Mr. Dalton, we have anything on our all business? Okay, moving on. Reports at the treasurer, Lori Gwynn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things this morning. For month ending of March, our consolidated account had $56,411,908. Our general fund contained $38,136,725. And since that point contributing to that, we, as I reported last meeting, we were getting ready to mail out delinquent notices. We did get those mailed. Real estate tax bills or delinquent notices contain prior year balances. We were not able to do that on personal property. But the taxpayers received those around March 31st, April 1st. So, to date, with total tax collected only, and this is April 1st through April 22nd, we've collected $414,807. And including penalty and interest, we've collected a little over $456,000. So, I don't know what to expect. I'm excited about that. It's not a lot, but it is a lot. A lot of folks didn't realize they owed prior year real estate, and they're coming in and paying those. So, I feel like including those balances has been very effective for us. Also, during that same timeframe on license fees, we have collected almost $25,000 in license fees in addition to the tax penalty and interest. So, we're having a good month thus far. I'm pleased, so we'll continue to keep digging. We're going through accounts one by one right now to try to clear up discrepancies and make people aware of prior years that they may owe that they didn't realize they owed. But continuing on with delinquents, tax amounts, we do have a judicial tax sale for real estate scheduled May the 11th at 1:00 in Circuit Court. We are selling 25 parcels, and the tax due only, tax only on those parcels consists of $39,000. So, hopefully, we'll at least be able to get all of our money that's due to us at this point. But 25 parcels, pretty good sale, I think. So, we'll see how that goes. If you're interested in anything, come on down and bid. Training on the Tyler system, our office will start training May 4th and 5th with revenue collections, so we're looking forward to that. Mr. Grant and Ms. Repass and myself will actually start working a little bit this week on general ledger entries, just to make sure that my staff is comfortable with those entries when we start July 1. So, we're gonna start a few things a little early, but my full office will start training May 4th and 5th. And that's all I have at this point.
I have a question. Lord, you were talking about the collecting of the $400,000 on real estate. That was from April?
That's all taxes. The four, the
Oh.
The $415,000 is tax only, and that covers real estate, personal property, machine and tools tax, mobile home, merchants' capital, all of our tax items.
Okay, but that, that's not reflected in this report?
No, sir. It will be in your next report.
Oh, okay.
Real estate only, for current year, we've collected almost $173,000. And then, in the delinquent for real estate only, almost $16,000. So, we're collecting pretty good on the real estate side.
So, the tax situation is actually better than we see here?
Yes, yes. Because your reporting is through March month end.
Right.
So, the numbers I'm giving you on this will reflect in your April month end reports that you'll receive next month.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Lori.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Sheriff Keith Dugan. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff. About the only thing I have for the board this morning is that we've been able to hire a part-time guy, a regional jail employee, and we've got the van fitted and ready to pick up trash, and we've picked up about three days, and we've picked up about two and a quarter tons in three days. We're gonna have him two days a week. We're still trying to find somebody else to drive the van so we can do it more often, but that's where we're standing right now.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sheriff?
Sheriff, I did have a request to pick up trash from Creek Bridge to Hope Road.
Okay.
And I seen the van. It is really good looking, ain't it?
Yeah, we got, that turned out not to be too bad. We had some old Crown Vic cages down at the office, and we, they won't fit anything right now. So, we're able to take it here locally and got that cage converted to fit in the back of the van. It cost us, what did it cost us, $500?
$1,000.
Yeah, and the cages, the cage to fit that van, that didn't exist. So, in the cage that we used, we paid $1,500 for that one. We retrokitted.
It looks good.
It came out pretty cheap.
That's good.
We walked away, she sent me a letter on the 19th about body cams, donation for $2,000 that you wanted amended appropriate.
Correct.
Mistake.
Right. That was a donation that was somebody made after we got the body cam started. It was Fairview, yeah. And we need something called a NAS. If you need that explained, you'll have to call David or Maggie. But it's a stor, it's storage for the video. The video takes up a lot of space, and the NAS is a way we can store it and still treat it like evidence, you know, because we have to treat video just like we do a murder weapon. It's no different.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we amend and appropriate to $2,000.
And then appropriate to $2,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions?
How soon will it be implemented?
Body cams? Yeah. They, we haven't ordered them yet because we've got the promise of one more donation. They donate by PayPal using the website, and we've got one more donation that Anthony's waiting on before we order. But we, our original request was just to try to get enough for the patrol division. We got enough donations from local businesses and individuals that we're gonna be able to outfit the patrol division, investigators, and get some in the courtrooms if the judges want them there. So, that turned out really well for me.
Okay, any more other questions? I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye. We also have a mutual aid agreement with Grayson County to approve. Sheriff, would you like to talk about that?
We work closely with Grayson County and have, ever since I worked for the sheriff's office, which has been 33 years. And Richard Bond, the sheriff there, worked here for a long time before he became sheriff over there. We've got a good working relationship with him, and we've had mutual great, mutual aid agreements with him in the past. And I would, it would be my recommendation that we continue that.
So, this is really just kinda like a renewal, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. I entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the mutual aid agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can you add the resolution?
Okay. Have a second on that.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, do we have agreements with other joining counties?
We do. Not all of them, but we do have some other mutual aid agreements. I think we do, if you ask me, don't we?
Task force mutual aid agreement.
Pulaski.
Valley drag task force.
That's correct. And I think we have a separate mutual aid agreement with the Pulaski County and Smith. But I don't think, any mutual aid agreement that we have with Smith County or Blaine County, if it's, if it's in existence right now, needs to be redone. So, I haven't talked to Chip or Tom about that yet, but I've got, I don't plan on doing that.
Any other questions? I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye.
Is that all you got?
I think it's
I've got a question for Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
So, when you snap?
Sheriff, you know the litter situation?
Yes.
As Ms. Myers mentioned a while ago, because of the problems that we've had recently with the convenience centers, the dump sites are starting up again. We've talked to Arlen. I've got one that's been inactive for about four years. It's got active again.
You know, if you can report those sites to us, we got the cameras, we've got five cameras that we purchased just putting on dump sites.
Well, we've been talking here about them now for three months. And, you know, I hope you know where that horseshoe loop is that makes them, there's the same trash been laying there for three months. And I'm not talking about litter, I'm talking about people dumping bags down there.
Now, Arlen comes by once in a while and picks up a camera, put it on the spot, and I, I don't really ask where they're going, you know, because he doesn't
Well, I mean, can, we've had those cameras for a year. What I'd like to see, and it's y'all, y'all's purview to do it, is when we get a conviction, that ought to be in the paper. You know, you do it on everything else. Those people that get a conviction for trash, it ought to make sure it's in the police report and not kept a secret. And I know nobody does that, but somebody has to pay when they get caught. But it don't seem like we've utilized the cameras, because that is good evidence most of the time.
Well, video is good evidence, but to be honest with you, we're not getting a lot of evidence of dumping. We've got a lot of evidence of some other things, but we don't have the evidence of dumping. So, uh
Well, it's a mystery how it gets there then, isn't it?
It is. But there's, there's several spots like that. We've got a couple of cameras up right now that my guys have put up. I don't know if Arlen's got any of our cameras out now, but we can, you know, if you can make us wear those, we'll, we'll do it until we run out of cameras.
Thank you.
If you got a site, just email Keith with the site, and you'll get them put up.
Right. They're good cameras. I mean, they're the best that was, that you could buy at the time when we got the grant from the Forest Service.
Anybody else have any questions for the sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Sheriff. I don't see Fay here this morning. Jeff Russell hasn't got here yet, so we'll
That's my fault. I told him Friday at 10:00.
Okay, yeah. We'll skip by them, go right to the water committee report.
All right. The Water Committee met on April 19th, 2016, makes the following recommendations. Amend and appropriate $6,420 to 4401-43310 for repairs needed at the Speedco entrance. This is for repairs to where a water line busted and it messed up underneath the concrete, and the concrete's fell in. Basically, we just gotta fix it.
Okay, coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Any other questions? Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye. Next.
And the second thing was to transfer $6,000, $62,000 from the general fund to the water account for the Speedwell Phase II project.
Okay, coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Any other questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye. Is that all you have from the water committee?
That was it.
Okay, moving right along, county administrators report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a letter from VRS that talks about the contribution rate, that allows the opportunity for an alternate rate, to be paying the full rate because there's always a catch-up provision if you do that alternate rate. Even though the letter says we have to do nothing if we don't select the alternate rate, or if we just use the regular rate and don't select the alternate rate. Last year, July, they asked us to pass the resolution by a vote that we do not accept the alternate rate ourselves. So, I asked the motion to bail, or firm a bail, full rate issue.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the county administrator to re, for the alternate, to not accept the alternate rate. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Any discussion?
I think we're much better off paying the full rate.
Didn't have to catch up later on. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, aye. Next item?
Next item is the letter from the Department of Justice, Department of Divisions, dealing with the Budget Act, Payable Sharing Payments. Obviously, now there is gonna be money next year for the budget. Back in the year, it says, "I probably get those payments." So, what the Feds has withdrawn is that any asset form, they just kept the money. Now, that money's been allocated. Keith, we should be, if we had any, if they hadn't passed, we should be coming to the treasurer's office.
We check, have been checking on that since they lifted the market money. And it shows that it's, it shows that it's owed us, but it doesn't. I'm, I'm just, I'm about to request, and we've requested it, and it keeps showing that it's owed us, but it doesn't give us any word of any timeline that members are receiving.
Well, we'll go by and see our good senator here. He's supposed to be, so we don't want him to just be here tonight. Uh, next item is our annual agreement with County Rogers Health District. They ask that we, we're in that agreement, authorize county administrator to sign that document.
Okay, a recommendation from the county administrator, but I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye.
Uh, next item is the Children's General Criminal Committee, Criminal Control Act. That's plenty to do with the DSS. We use it to work with juveniles, people in foster care, placements. It's not a lot of money, but this commitment is for a two-year period that lasts seventeen and eight.
Okay, we have a recommendation to approve the county administrator to sign. Any other questions? To have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Now, any other questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes, aye.
Uh, next item is a request from the lane group to use an additional work on the essential site, match the plan up to a $12,000 limit, and create 3D modeling, development of the other portions of the site, et cetera.
Okay, do I have a motion? Approve the request? Amendment?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Under scope of services, item number 11, it says, "Upon the client's approval, the design and construction documents, the lane group shall assist the client in obtaining bids or"
You're on the second, Gary, we're talking about
That first one.
Which one?
Two in there.
I'm sorry. I thought it was continuous.
No.
I apologize.
Speaking of minimum one, the original conceptual one.
Okay.
We're in discussion. Have they delivered anything last week?
I took off Friday afternoon, and I haven't read an email since Friday afternoon. I do not know if they've delivered or not. They were supposed to deliver it Friday afternoon. So, I cannot answer your question.
Okay.
But if you give me the 1:00 today, I'll give you the 2 minutes of having an answer.
Okay. And the $12,000 will come from?
It would come from the five bid that we're filing.
Any other questions?
It was, when we closed that loan in December, just to let everybody know, it was $50,000 that you had to accept and draw down.
Okay. So, it's sitting there.
It's sitting there. We've spent $15,940 for conceptual plan. This is amendment to that conceptual plan.
Any more questions? Here and then, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 I'll vote aye.
And the chair votes, aye. The next
Next item is the Phase One Engineering Proposal for a Phase One Site Raiding Plan. The scope of services, thirteen items scheduled. I want to get it completed as soon as possible, obviously. I'll deal with the fee and basic payment. Work tasks 1 through 10 and 13, it is, it is total. You wrote, just to go through the property, decide the roads that are gonna be taken over in the future as a deed operator. The layout of the buildings, development, amount of dirt, et cetera, cost estimate is $54,000. Item two, which is bidding a project, is $5,000. It's time and expenses, not to exceed $5,000. And item three was the record drawings of $2,800. That would be providing the documents of what's actually all the grade on after the grade is completed and how prepared with the original site rating. And all three of those are not to exceed, guaranteed not to exceed. I guess it's really gonna say, successful, not to exceed without approval. And Gary, item 11, what was your question?
My question is, it says, "Upon the client's approval, the design and construction documents, the lane group shall assist the client in obtaining bids or negotiated proposals." That's, that's what I want to ask. I mean, is there a difference between bids and negotiated proposals? I'm I'm, I'm assuming that everything-
It is complete. It's, our directions were, were to bid it. The reason that negotiated proposals is in there is if the bids come in above our budget, then we've got to be able to negotiate that price down the way. We have this much money, and this much has been allocated to grade. If those bids come in, instead of redesigning this whole thing and taking weeks and months, is to sit down with those bidders and come up with a price to get it back in the budget, negotiate the proposal. That's what, that's how the directions we gave them, how the wording is. That's the intent.
Okay, well, when I read that, I, you know, what concerned me was that, you know, I was afraid something might not go out to bids and just be a negotiated proposal. And I'm assuming that everything that we do will go out to bids and also that all, all, all documents, all designs, everything like that, will, I guess will come through committee, but will come to the full board for approval.
Yes.
Not at the committee level. Okay.
What, what does all mean? Are you talking about the initial documents and that being into it or throughout the construction of project? You don't expect everything to come to the board, do you?
I expect everything's going to cost money in, in the design to, to come to the board.
Okay. The key word there is design. Okay.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm missing, what else would, would we be talking about?
Well, during, during construction, things need a quick answer. And we don't do a whole lot of things quick. But if you're talking about, does this go there or does that go there, there has to be administrative decisions made during construction, you know?
But anything that would, would necessitate a change order would come to the board?
Well, it always does.
Right. So anything that, that, that changes the money at all comes, comes to the board?
Yeah, just so it's not a very closed comment that we bring up later, Gary, that, you know, if a door needs moved, it's a zero change order, that's, that's an administrative decision.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is not the building. This is just the-
This is the grade work.
Just the grade. So if, for example, there shouldn't, if you grade a project, there shouldn't be any change orders unless they fully miss this boat because it's going to be a set of plans that are guaranteed, hopefully not to exceed, finished project. But for example, if we decide after it's graded, and all of a sudden we go out there and everybody says, well, the building really shouldn't have been there, and this painting needs to be rock instead of dirt, it's not going to hold, then we'll be coming back with some kind of change order, just like we do with the water sewer.
Yeah. And, and you said that we had a, a, a set amount for, for the grading. Do, do we know what that is or not? I don't know if I do.
Well, I guess in my opinion, we and Mr. Vaughn developed a, a, a cost estimate upfront that we had about a million bucks somewhere. I don't remember exactly, but I think you have a copy of that spreadsheet somewhere that we sent out. The building was this much, grading was this-
Oh, that the lane group had?
Yeah.
I'm not sure they gave that to us, did they?
Well, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
But-
Because I know in, in their proposals, one was, was 10 million, one was 12. Yeah, okay.
So we, there's got to be a limit of what we're doing with grade. I mean, we can't spend $5 million on grading, so we know the building's going to be $4 million or something. We know that.
So we're, we're using the top end as the lane's group estimate? Okay.
That's why I'm, I'm just-
Okay.
At the end of the day, when the bids come in, in May, let's say the second week or so of May, you guys will be getting a bid, just like you do with water sewer, roads, et cetera, to review and approve.
Okay.
Anything that, this changes any process that the board can discuss.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept and authorize Mr. Dalton, the county administrator, to sign phase one site grading plan.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any other questions?
Now, that, that includes the top end for grading?
No, this is for the design only, right?
This is design only?
This is just an agreement to pay lane to get it ready to go to bid.
Okay.
But it nearly will happen if the bids come in, it's $2 million, this come back. This board's going to have to make some hard decisions once we're done.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Have a motion, second. I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
I'll vote aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Uh, next item is the robust farmer cox, our annual statement of services. This spells out what their duties will be next year's audit. Request that that be approved, authorize signature of that understanding between the county.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve and authorize Mr. Dalton to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make it motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Next item is House Bill Two.
Uh, the next item is the application screening questionnaire that we'll be working with Ken Moore on the new projects, proposing with Ken. I guess currently, as the staff see is that we want to make an application for this access road to Parker's Park and get it off of $5 million coming out of local dollars to put it back into a V-DOT six-year plan. The second portion is to fix the southeastern quadrant here, exit 77, using the X road. Then the other, the truck landing lane, it's down on 77. If there's any other projects, I know we've long talked about the grading road at exit 80 over towards Fort Chisholm. I don't know where that fits in the pecking order next year, but this application, if it gets funded, V-DOT takes a couple of, could sweep the spot, so to speak. If you're successful in this next application, it's by, it's actually six-year. So somebody's got some opportunity to bring all those forth, and then there'll later on be some other documents that the board will have to approve.
Okay.
Let, let me clarify something. You, you brought up six-year plan. We're not voting on anything to do with six-year plan right now.
This is the primary road interstate six-year plan. You don't get to vote on.
Right.
You get to pass the resolution and support of what you-
Right. This has nothing to do with secondary roads?
No.
Okay.
There's several six-year plans. Primary interstates is a six-year plan. Secondary roads, which Mr. Russell will talk about here in a few minutes when he shows up, completely different issue.
I, one thing, and maybe I didn't hear correctly, I thought you said something about taking the, the, the $5 million, putting it into this plan for the access road?
If we get it funded through this, that means it'd be in the six-year plan funded 100% by V-DOT.
Okay, but we still have the capability of revenue sharing if that does not work?
It's still out there. We've got, from the day it was funded, three years. We're still have that capacity. We could not budget that money in next year's budget, but our half is by V-DOT.
Right. I, just whenever you say six-year plan, I think black hole. Uh, yeah, when that, nothing ever gets, you know, gets done. So that was why I was asking that.
Well, the six-year plans are typically, leave the sour taste everybody's passion. Uh, last item, just as clarification, the email from Mr. Sutherland, smoking guns, build a new building, intersection of Kent's Lane and East Lee. By agreement, they, we gave them that water service area a long time ago because they ran a 14-inch line. So for clarification, so they can have a piece of paper in there, another piece of paper, I'd ask that you confirm that smoking guns at East Lee, Kent's Lane, could be a town water festival.
How big, Gary, does that cover that they have?
Everything that that 14-inch water line, it comes from the town limits on Parker's Fair, it goes to pass Coleville Services. There on the right, that has firehouse. Everything went to Parker's Park, and it comes back out on Kent's Lane, and then back to the town limits.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to-
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
Mr. Dalton, would it make sense to say just something about that, to go ahead and do the approval for all three of those blocks down there, and not have to come back and just do it one each time?
Well, they, we actually gave them a map with the service area. This is just the, just the confirm. There's- Maybe easier to just say the locker property. Instead of smoking guns, just everything on the locker property. It's in their service area.
Okay. I'm in the motion?
I'm in that motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Is that all you have, Mr. Dalton?
There was a little more to that, wasn't there?
Sir?
Didn't he write something else of Mr. Sutherland about the trash, bush, the minute? Oh, that was the second part of Mr. Sutherland's email.
I think there were more questions to do, that's needing to do.
Yeah.
Because we're actually working on it now.
Well, I responded, Mr. Sutherland. The town has a brush collection day, and for a small fee, you can take it to the old. So I went to his website, it published his two trash collection, or brush collection day, because you can, every other month in the summer, whatever day it is, you can put brush beside, on the street, and they'll come by and pick it up in the town limits.
But you said the right thing, that small fee.
Well, that's without a fee, if you put it beside the road. If you take it on a Saturday down to the landfill by appointment, you pay a small fee. But I picked it up several times beside my house. I just stick it out on top of Van Hooch Road.
Mr. Dalton, when are we going to discuss the convenience centers? We continue to get calls. What's the appropriate time to deal with that?
Well, the county attorney is supposed to be, solidating those two, two ordinances. Alvin Burrow wouldn't really have it ready, but his time is next. I would, wouldn't you want to talk about it? Sooner the better, right?
Yeah, we need some relief of what's going on with the complaints. Convenience centers have now passed us on my phone calls.
Do you want me to bring that to a committee meeting for the next 14, or have that-
Well, I thought when we had a committee last week, or week before last, that Mr. Dalton was a good temporary solution, and it hadn't been implemented.
What, what was that?
He said if these people show up with something, just go ahead and take it, and don't send people back home with a load of trash and, and tell them this is the rules. But that hadn't happened. It, the people at the convenience center haven't heard what you said. Tim, the complaints you called me about, this is exactly germane to what we're talking about. Citizens go, and they get accosted by these people at the convenience center, tell them to go away, take it somewhere else. Some people actually go to another convenience center where there's a more friendly attendant, and they can get rid of it, or they get sent back home with it, tell them to reprocess their truck. I thought we had that out of committee. Didn't you think we had a solution?
I did.
It hasn't happened.
Well, I, I'm like everybody else. I've been getting, you know, phone calls and people, you know, stopping me and, you know, talking about it. Got a phone call yesterday, guy very, you know, very polite, you know, very reasonable. Although he was under the misconception, he thought that it was the rules from, you know, from V and M. And I told him no. I said it was, it was, you know, from, from the ordinance. But the ordinance is, what, 23 years old? Of the original?
Well, the original was 93, the next one was 99.
I think, yeah, I think that one is like 23 years old, and one is like 17 years old. I, you know, my, my point is, I understand that Mr. Farthing is, is, is combining those, but I think that any, any ordinance that's 23 and 17 years old needs to be revisited as far as its content. And in all honesty, if we make a mistake in, in, in the trash ordinance, I'd rather make a mistake on the side of, you know, liberalism than I would, uh, yeah, it just has to do with trash, Joe. Uh, uh, you know, that we would, you know, allow people to, you know, to take things. Because I, unless I'm wrong, the biggest complaint that I had ever gotten about the recycling centers is that the open box containers got filled up too quick, and they weren't dumped quickly enough. I still contend that especially the one that I go to, I don't know about the rest of them, but that we need to move that one big recycling bin that sits there for, for three and four and sometimes five months and never gets filled up. Just remove it and on its concrete pad, put another open top container. I think that that would go a long way toward solving a lot of these problems. But when we, when we look at the ordinance and it says, what, 100, 100 pounds of metal? Uh, yeah, when you, a couple of things about that. One is, that was written before he started selling the metal, I'm assuming. Two is that if you take anything that's metal, uh, yeah, well, 100 pounds is not, uh, you know, doesn't take too much to, to make 100 pounds, so.
I sincerely doubt if they turn you away if you break metal. If I turn you away for breaking-
Well, they was, it's one complaint I was called, they said, oh, you can dump, we'll take the metal, but we're not going to take nothing else. So the person said, you're not getting it either. And he took it to the transfer station.
Well, so do we have, uh-
The transfer station just pulls it out and puts it in the same box.
Well, he was-
So do we have a, a timeline? I mean, after Mr. Farthing gets the, the, the thing combined, then I guess why I'm asking, will we take it and look at it and make changes from there?
For our next, I think, building grounds, building grounds committee, that's for...
Next Tuesday.
These guys Tuesday, we should have something back to the board for the following Tuesday.
So that's what's holding up the tri-poles, to see what he's got.
No, tri-poles are actually being reviewed, they, Jeremy's got them, he's got the three quotes on them, he has, working with the vendor, that he got the best price on, to get set up, and get everything out to them, to get them back to us. So they, that's, I checked the demo again in the meeting here, after you asked that. And he is waiting to check with the vendor, make certain everything's set up, so he can get those finished. But they are ready to go.
Well, I'm going to ask the hard question. How are we going to get the tri-poles to the attendants to make sure they don't get put in a desk and never handed out to the people? These people have some social problems of dealing with their, with their customers. Because that's what they really should have, is a client-customer relationship, instead of a Hitler Youth relationship.
Well, it'd be just like our household hazardous waste, the orange, lime, green. You've got them last year in September. I got five or six, every time I went, they tried to hand me one of those. The attendants will be giving them one to everybody that happens in.
And a gentleman from V and M called me this last week, just to check and see if we had the flyers yet, because he's wanting to give them to, to all the employees, to get them hand in the mouth. They, they want to have something that they can give them as well, to show everyone, this is what the rules are, because it's easier for them to have that, to get out to them.
Well, what I said to him to go in the interim, Mr. Dalton had a really good solution. Quit antagonizing these people, and, and sending them back home, because it's a half-inch higher than the pickup bed, or because the brush is not 24 inches long. Just quit making the people mad over these things that we're trying to fix.
See, now, I've had a person tell me that they went to one convenience center where the attendant actually had cut a stick, two feet, so that he, you know, he put it up against anything that they were throwing away, and if it was over two feet, he told them that they couldn't do it. So, I mean, that's the sort of thing that we run into. So if we can just, if we can just look at it and come up with, I know that this is going to be an odd thing, but a common sense, you know, and I think that when this thing was written, it was common sense. I think when it was written, it was written for, you know, for very good reasons. But again, after 17 and 23 years, I think it needs to be revisited.
What the big problem is, that for years, they've been accepting all this stuff.
Yeah.
And now, they're not.
Two feet is still 24 inches. It didn't make sense then, and that don't make sense now, that you got to cut twigs up to 24 inches long.
But, in, in no defense, I think that the, the emphasis on, on, on the rules is coming from us, isn't it? So, you know, we're the ones that will have to, have to deal with it. So whoever's on the Building and Grounds Committee, you know, fix it if you would.
Three wise men.
Do what? Three wise men, I'm looking here, I'm not sure.
I was going to say, do we have another board? Because I ain't seen three wise men.
So that will become the Building and Grounds Committee Tuesday morning. Okay. Okay, Mr. Farthing, it's your, you're up. Anything else you have?
I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. I'll move on to the board.
We will have, excuse me, Mr. Farthing has a report for closing session later on.
Okay, Board of Supervisors, District One, Black Dick, Dr. Hausman?
Well, I was going to bring up the, the recycling centers, but we've, we've done that. The only other thing that I'd like to bring up is that, unless Facebook is wrong, I'd like to wish Mr. Wilson happy birthday.
Can't hide anything anymore.
So, so happy birthday, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
And that's all for me.
Okay, District Two, Wes Whiffle?
All I've had is complaints on the convenience centers, same as everybody else has. I've even been told, they've been telling people, you can't bring a truckload of trash anymore, it's just one box full.
I had a convenience center employee tell me that you couldn't bring the wheelbarrow But I mean, it's not just, it's not the rules, actually, it's getting interpreted, I guess would be the worker.
Is that all you have, Mr. Lester?
I had another man talking about the, I guess, the tri-poles. He said, he was questioning why they were, some bids were taken from locally, and some bids were taken from, I guess, online sources. He wanted them all printed locally, was his complaint. And that's all. Doug Eastwhiffle.
Sheriff Dunn again?
Happy birthday, boy.
Yeah, thanks. Good news story last night, very insightful. A lot of people were watching it. So I've got.
Okay, District Four, Fort Chiswell?
Well, we've already discussed the transfer station, or the convenience centers, but thanks for getting the trash people back out. Getting the Fort Chiswell bypass, which some of you know as Lot's Cap Road, that, that was a good place to hit, that was pretty bad over there, and I've had a lot of good comments. Glad to see them back, everybody that I've talked to. VDOT is proceeding with the work at Archer Road. Finally, we're going to get that done. Boy, it looks a lot better than a dump the road job. And I need to talk to Mr. Dalton about a couple of things that made the job go a lot better. When Mr. Russell gets here, we're going to really discuss the six-year plan on. And that's trash, the dump, Steve is still down there on Horseshoe. If you can get a jail crew to clean it up, it's getting pretty rank.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Lead Mines District?
The only thing I have, I have a couple of roads, and I'll give in to Mr. Russell when I get here.
Okay. Spiebel District, Gene?
I have some roads for Mr. Russell. The only thing, other thing I can think of that I've had complaints of is, I hope that whoever's doing the tri-poles is not the same people that did the With News little bro thing that we put out, because we had a bunch of them in Spiebel that was missing about half of the pages out of. If you do, you won't have a tri-pole, you'll just have a single piece of paper.
That was done internally, and Mr. Farley told me they did have some center pages missing in Royal Tree, I wouldn't want to speak to them.
There, there was some in Spiebel, too.
That's all, everybody Royal Tree feels left at anyway.
We just want to figure.
We were just afraid against Spiebel that they left all the pictures out, so therefore we could read it.
Okay, anything else, Gene?
No.
Okay, I have something. We've done talked about the recycling centers. I have a road complaint for Mr. Russell. And other than that, we'll continue on with the agenda, until Mr. Russell gets here. Under new business, we have the consent calendar.
I make the motion, we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Open for any discussion.
I have a question I'd like to ask. What about all these people, these delinquent water bills that, it's half of them dead?
Well, it's down below the consent counter, isn't it?
Is that part of the consent count?
Yeah. It's on page...
128, 129, 130. Well, I see one of them, it's 11,000 some dollars.
Why ain't they, put a judgment against the state?
21,000.
Where is that, Coy, I'm missing here?
Paid 139.
Paid 137.
139, I got it, I got it right now, yep.
The ones highlighted in yellow, which are hard to see, are the ones that she has taken to court and gotten judgments against her.
But how about the rest?
You have taken them?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
The, the ones highlighted in yellow, which is very light and hard to see over here.
How about the rest of them? I mean, they're totaling 80,700.
Yeah, the, several of them, well, she's just taken more of them to court, she takes them in, in groups, and been working on them for a while. In fact, as I called Mr. Hausman yesterday, there was a gentleman yesterday in the Royal Tree area that received his notice for, to show a period in court, was calling and asking about it. They are, they do have some on the list, I don't know how many are on this list the next time. They're continuing working areas, and then if they work that area, take those to court.
So that, the figure down there at the bottom, is that what's left on, 80,000?
If you subtract all the ones, a lot of those bigger amounts, Coy, have, we've already went to court and had judged, the ones in the alley, which you can barely see. I see one for 21, one for 20, one for seven, seven, eight, eight, eight. So those are already having judgments done.
Any idea how they pick who they take to court?
From back, what they were doing originally, a couple of things. One, some of the larger ones from the earlier projects are the ones that were taken to court, and then after some of those were taken, started doing them. Did Lead Mines Road, out of 69, did, did that whole area, and took everyone of those to court there. The ones that are going to court now, and, and instead of letting them get to this large, are the ones out on the Withfield, the Spiebel Page One, that have not paid in the last couple of years, or whatever, on the non-user fees. Those have gone to court, some from Royal Tree to Withfield in there. So that's, after they did the initial ones, they've been working them by a road project or by an area. And the goal with the latest two, Withfield, Royal Tree, Withfield, Spiebel, was to get those now, don't let them start building up some of these large amounts, before that money comes in. And this is one of those as well, where, using Joe's term earlier, people need to understand you get the judge, you get these things paid off, so that everyone's aware that they're going to court if they don't get them paid.
Mr. Barrett, the guy that you called me about, I mean, it's, should it not be higher than that? $60.76?
It's more than that.
It's not the third?
Yeah.
What page is it on?
It's on the last page, it's on page 141.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, there's one on page, 142. Now, why, why is there two? Does he have two properties? Or is it a different?
I'd have to look at it and see.
Okay, well, that makes, that makes more sense.
Yeah, the one on 141, if you want that, they're going to court.
Okay.
Along with the, there's a couple more you see, I know the same amount, 42207, those
Do we have any other questions or discussion on the consent counter? Do we have a motion second to approve? I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the general is Resolution 2016-04 on page 146. With County Resolution 2016-4, Resolution to withdraw from the Virginia First Regional Industrial Facility Authority, whereas the County of With is currently a member of the Virginia First Regional Industrial Facility Authority, and whereas the County of With desires to withdraw from the authority, and whereas a member locality may withdraw from the authority upon a resolution adopted by the governing, governing, governing body, therefore be it resolved by the County of With, Virginia, that the same hereby withdraws from the Virginia First Regional Industrial Facility Authority, and request that any remaining dues be deducted from the amount previously paid, and that the balance be refunded to the county. Be it further resolved, that the resolution be adopted by the With County Board of Supervisors on this 26th day of April 2016. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Go move.
Have a second?
Tag.
Any discussion?
Now, which one is this one?
This is the one, Commerce Park, it's the double.
Okay. What's the one out towards Smith County? Or that Smith County's in? That we just hired a new guy for?
Oh, that's the A Corridor.
Okay, okay, all right.
That's, A Corridor is the regional market group, this is actually a crossroad.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Resolution adopted.
That language in there about, how much did the county pay in initially? Says deduct dues from that, and then send us the amount.
Well, what that's saying is, we pay dues for a period of time, $5,000. They offered that because it was determined that they couldn't take that money and put it towards the land they bought and developed. And they, I remember they had an email somewhere, said they were going to return it to us, they never did. And what this resolution says, whatever we owe you, take it out of that, and then if there's any left, give it to us, and we're separated from, permanent.
But the other side of that, if there's not enough there to take care of what he's saying we owe them, we're not going to pay them.
I think that's a decision that you'll make in the future. The resolution is to say, hey, we went out, let's get this discussion going, go through this thing about getting out of that authority. We have not paid dues in the past five years.
I'm well aware of that, that's why I didn't go to the meeting.
So that's $25,000. There is also, when you pass the resolution, the statute says you're supposed to pay the current year dues and the next year dues to give out. That's what the statute says in the code. What Mr. Dalton's referring to is that all the localities have paid dues for years, and they decided they couldn't use that on Commerce Park. And there was a surplus of money there for administration to spend. And there was a surplus of money there for administration expenses, and there was some discussion some time ago about refunding that back to the localities. Mr. Dalton reports that that had not happened with county, that we never received any refund. When Salem and Narrows withdrew from the authority, that issue of them paying the current year dues and the next year's dues was essentially taken out of whatever money was supposed to have been refunded to them, and I believe they got a little bit of money back. Now that's been two or three years ago, they got out. So I don't know what was available for with county, um, but us submitting the resolution saying, here's our resolution, we went out, I'm sure we'll stir a letter from them saying, here's what you owe us, or, and we talked about the money, that. Strictly speaking, the code, Virginia says you'll pay last year's and next year's. That's right.
But you paid in for over ten years, did you?
It started ninety-eight, so, yeah, yeah. My, my recollection was forty thousand, forty-two that they were supposed to send back. Hopefully it ended up that they'll all just say, thanks, let us go, keep the money, we'll go on.
Well, have they refunded the money back to the other counties?
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, let me back up. There's some, I noted one of the minutes that said that the people that owned into the project there were made of land and sand. They just rolled their money over into that project and didn't take it. So I don't know if they got that money, if they just said, fit it for the project. But that, that is a little different, like, they, they rebate the money.
But they got to use the money. Okay, uh, next item is Bay Court twenty sixteen seventeen renewal.
This is a renewal of Bay Court, uh, one of the things I want to point out, the volunteer accident sickness. It's on page one forty-nine. We have now went to a zero deductible. We had four or five, we had a five thousand dollar deductible, we had four or five people that had claims last year. The deductible became a big issue, so we've gone to zero deductible. Gary, Mr. Horney is out and breaks his leg, there's nothing out.
Let's not do that again.
There's nothing out of pocket.
And, and that was sort of the situation in retreat, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, how, how much did that increase our premiums?
I don't think it really increased the premiums all, but the issue here is that we're going to cover all six fire departments. Now, Whitfield wasn't really covered last night, so. If this does not cover emergency medical people, they're all paid. It should be covered under Workman's Comp. But they should, I think it's four or five that we've been dealing with, one for Parents' Spring, one for rural tree, one for Whitfield, maybe for Speedwell. But still excess coverage, if you've got healthcare, this much, and we're going to send out a memo to the fire department, this is not Workman's Comp. If you've got healthcare, whether it be with the county or your employer, this pays above all expenses that the healthcare coverage doesn't cover.
Healthcare, healthcare covers first, then this is second.
Yep, so you don't pay anything out of pocket, so. But it's excess coverage, it's not Workman's Comp, and that's, Martha's been driven crazy because every fireman that's been hurt goes to the hospital and says, I got Workman's Comp. Well, Workman's Comp means a couple of things. If you can't negotiate any rates at the hospital, the hospital's going to charge you that rate. So there's no negotiation. If you go under the healthcare, your healthcare, if you have it, they have a negotiated rate, so. Then this coverage picks up that, the difference in that negotiated rate that came out of your pocket. So you get the best of both work. Workman's Comp is a bad place to be, in my opinion, if you're hurt. For employees, okay, but for the employer, it just makes you experience modification. Go from, I think we'll see on our Workman's Comp, our modification went from one point two-two to one point four-two. Which, this Workman's Comp is where we really get killed this year. But if you've got that experience modification of one point four-two, that means you're paying forty-two percent more than you did last year. We've asked that you approve this. Still believe it's the best, the rate's going.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we approve the renewal.
I'll make it a motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Now, any more discussion?
Now, it'll be pretty important we get the word out to the firemen that don't make a, it's not Workman's Comp.
The best fire and rescue, we, we've got to talk to those chiefs that show up and say, this is what we've got. You can't, if they go in the hospital and call it Workman's Comp, the hospitals, they hide the flags.
Okay.
Anything else?
In that same, uh, agreement, i- is inland marine policy part of this, or is it total policy? What, what does that cover?
We've got a list, uh, of everything that everybody turned in. We don't cover anything less than a hundred bucks or a couple hundred bucks, but if you turn it in, if you've got a, uh, the water department's got tamperers, chainsaws, water pumps, uh, same thing with the fire department.
That's why I asked, why, why are they still carrying a policy of their own?
They should be carrying a policy, we told them, they, every one of them gave us a list. And it was pretty comprehensive, them to nauseous.
Can we put that on the next committee? I, I believe they're still carrying insurance on their equipment and stuff. And some of their stuff is not worth the premium they're paying. They're buying that through Chesterfield, so you know that's a hard sale, that y'all really need this, but we're paying a premium here to cover that stuff, they shouldn't be paying another policy.
It's just like the new compressor is going to be bought. Fairness Springs is going to be covered under our machine, inland machine.
So is there anything that the fire department should be carrying any insurance on? Because the trucks are all county trucks.
Gene, I think the fire departments are all, I don't know if you've got pagers, some of these guys still have pagers and... Some of you, a couple of departments claim they still have radio towers, I don't know where they're at, but I think a couple of people are claiming ready. One for Speedwell is on our insurance up in Land. So, I don't know, when we reorganize you guys, why anything would be on any. Unless you got stuff we don't open. I know you got plenty of money in there, Mike.
Yeah, you ain't seen their checking account lately than have you.
I'm talking about the CD, it's two hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, the CD's different, they ain't touched it yet. Give them time.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the renewal, any other discussion? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 And Chair votes, aye. Next item on the agenda is the May Day. Is, uh, this Thursday and Friday. Uh, I'm usually go, but I'll be out of town, I don't know if any of the rest of you had signed up. It's a good thing, Joe.
I didn't sign up, but I'll be there Thursday with a busload of kids.
I know, I see Gene there, and, uh, it's a, it's a good thing, the kids really enjoy it in the county, and, I mean, they teach them a lot, show them a lot of stuff, um, up there.
Shoot, I've learned a lot of things there.
Yeah, I have too.
Of course, it did take a whole lot to me learn something.
But it's a, it's a good thing they do that for the, for the kids in school. This year it's, uh, what grade is it, Gene?
Had it a minute ago, Gene.
I know, read it somewhere which grade it was going to be.
Which days?
The grade, uh...
Who says elementary?
Elementary school, I thought it was the third grade.
Second grade.
Second.
Second grade. Okay. Mr. Dalton, is anything under other besides the closed meeting?
We need closed session for husband counsel. We can match.
Okay, uh...
Consultation of legal counsel on some contracts.
Okay, I entertain a motion to go on closed session. Before I do that, which section, contract?
It's six, legal counsel. Legal counsel, yeah.
Somebody needs to put that on my cheat sheet. Alright, I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convened in closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by our Virginia Code two point two thirty-seven eleven A six. Consultation with legal...
I believe Stevens told me it's A five.
A five. Okay, A five. And this is a matter involving a prospective new business or industry or an expansion. I have a second. Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second to go on closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to come out of closed session. So moved. I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to come out of closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Willis, you read the certification.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
I have a second on adopting the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? None, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye.
And Chair votes, aye. Now, we have Mr. Russell from VDOT, you want to come on up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have put a packet like this at each, except it's stationed. In a second, I'm going to do my utmost best to try to explain the six-year plan, tell you how it works, where we're at. First, I wanted to update you on a couple of projects we have going on in With County construction. Route six nineteen to St. Peters Road, that project is progressing according to schedule, and hopefully they finish it sometime this fall. And we have a bridge replacement project on six twenty-five Crawfish Road. They're working on it, and it should be complete in six to seven weeks. In your packet, the first thing you'll find, I have included a paving, uh, slurry seal schedule for this year. It lists the routes, the twos and froms of what we're planning on paving this summer. I'm going to get into the six-year plan, and, first time I've ever done this, so I hope it makes sense, so. The first sheet, it shows at the top last year's secondary six-year plan and the funding amounts we've received. With County gets two types of funding, one on the left is the C T B, Commonwealth Transportation Board Formula money for unpaved roads, and With County also gets telefee funding. And across the top, you can see last year, the six-year plan included fiscal year twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one. You can see the amounts across the sheet, and at the end of the day, in the bottom right, we had two million four hundred eighty thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars in the six-year plan. You'll also notice that under fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there was a zero. That is in coordination with, uh, House Bill two and House Bill eighteen eighty-seven, uh, the new ways of funding projects, and the C T B formula money, uh, was going to disappear and disappear after the year twenty twenty. So that's why there's a zero there. Going into this year, and relatively new to the House Bill two process, really didn't know what to expect. We were going to pay, uh, pay to get these unpaid roads hard-surfaced, and really didn't expect any money this year, didn't know what was going to happen. But I am happy to say that if you look at this year's six-year plan on the bottom, it's got fiscal years twenty seventeen, that's the current year that we're getting ready to program the roads to, even though it's two thousand sixteen, in the program, they call it two thousand seventeen, that is this July, the plan we're getting ready to do. You've got the six years through two thousand twenty-two. Down underneath that, you have the C T B formula money, and again, you see that it zeroed out after twenty twenty. But they did come up, and they've added district grant money for unpaved roads on the bottom. Pretty good amount, six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars in those last two years. So that's supposedly taking the place of the loss of the C T B formula money, that's our avenue to get unpaid roads hard-surfaced. At the end of, uh, end of the day, our six-year program, as we're looking at it right now, the projected allocations is three million four hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. So that's a million-dollar increase from what we thought we had last year, and that's a good problem to have. So do y'all have any questions about this first sheet? Behind it, I have included last year's six-year plan and the projects that were on that plan. Now, the ones that are in the gray, such as St. Peters Road, uh, that does not come out of the secondary six-year budget money, that is funded through another process. That's not your money, it doesn't come out of your allocations. As well as the last two, uh, one of those is a bridge replacement project, and the other one, I think it's a revenue sharing project, so those do not come out of the county's allocations. No.
There's...
They haven't identified any funding for this replacement yet. This, this sheet here, I kind of, I throwed it together, kind of tried to help explain how we program the funding. Up at the top, you've got the... we program the funding. Up at the top, you've got the six consecutive years in the six-year program, 2017 through 2022. And 2017 is this current year that we're getting ready to program for. In the gray, right under that, this year, we have $424,000, and it goes across, that's the amounts per year that are projected. Our job is to distribute that to projects. And the way we operate, we fully fund a project before we add another one. So if you look at the first project, Archer Road, the estimate on it was $398,000. We already have $164,000 on it from years past that we've allocated to the project. So this year, we're gonna put $233,000 out of the 424 towards Archer Road. And the, the dark green boxes means that it's fully funded. So Archer Road is fully funded this year. Miller's Creek, it was already previously, we already had enough funding on it. We don't need to add anymore. Craigor Road will be fully funded in 2018 or next, not this six-year plan, not this July, but the next July is supposed to be fully funded, as well as Myrtle Lane. And a rule with the six-year projects and when we start a project, if it's fully funded next year, we can start it this year. You can start it a year prior to when it's fully funded. So that being said, this July, we conceivably could start Miller's Creek, Craigor Road, and Myrtle Lane. The constraint is, we're doing this with state forces. They have other maintenance issues they have to tend to. They get to these projects as they can. And I guess that's a concession for $150,000 per mile for a project versus if it goes to a contract, you're looking at $2 million a mile. That's a benefit of the rural rustic program. So this kinda gives you an idea of the projects currently on the plan down through Nixon and when they will be fully funded, what year, when we conceivably could start them. And down at the bottom, the balance, in 2020, we still have $54,000. We can program towards a new project, as well as 2021, 2022. Each year, we have $721,000 that we can put towards new projects. So this upcoming six-year plan, we have $1,496,927 to program towards new projects. And that equivalates, we use an estimate of $150,000 a mile, so you're looking at 10 miles of unpaid road projects if you go the rural rustic concept route that we can add to the six-year plan. Any questions on that sheet? The last packet I have, this is the unpaved routes, the log, and they are in order from top to the bottom of traffic count or A A D T. That's average daily traffic count. And over on the right, if the road is already on the six-year plan, I have put on plan. If it's rural rustic eligible, we have put a Y. If it's not rural rustic eligible, we have put an N. So we have reviewed several of these projects, but there are still several that we haven't reviewed to see if it qualifies as a rural rustic project. So I suppose the task at hand is coming up with 10 miles of roads to add to the six-year And I'm here today to kinda get an idea, how do you all want to handle this, or do we-
I have a question for you, Jim.
All right.
Some of those roads that are currently on the plan, little Archer, it's from one end to one end. Miller's Creek is just a short piece, but it's bigger, longer road. Craigor, Myrtle Lane is from end to end. Craigor is from end to end. Are any of these roads that's currently on there, could, will we leave in a piece, short, that's not getting all out of it, or force it all out?
There are some on the plan, and just like you said, Miller's Creek, you have Major, Major Graham's Road.
Nixon's from end to end. So there's four on there that's not, that's just taking a piece.
And New Bethel more than-
Yeah, we're on both ends. New Bethel, at Route 11, we went up to the curve, Buster Houses. And on the other end, we came back out to the curve at Jeff Johnson's house.
No, I'm not sure- New Bethel, we, can we do it rural rustic all the way through?
Yeah, we extended the whole route, excluding the section where the low water bridge-
Yeah, we did. The bridge, that was the problem.
So about 10th mile on each side of the bridge, it's not gonna be done. But we're, but what we are doing is, is capturing every residence. So it will be surface treated to every residence on the way down.
Can I tell you that again? It'll be surface treated. Okay, so back.
It was Buster House, for a fact.
Well, yeah, I know, but Martha Corbin, Linda's mother, Linda Smith's mother lives on down the road.
Yeah, and it will catch her driveway too. It's gonna catch every driveway on New Bethel. Basically, the section where the low water bridge is, the low section there, that's the only section that's not-
I don't think that there's anybody who's, I don't think anybody who's in that house now. And, and going up the hill where the Kinsers go in?
Yeah, just, just past the Kinsers driveway is where it'll stop toward the, toward the low water bridge.
Okay.
So the Kinsers driveway will, will be onto surface treated route as well.
How much of, how much of that road is not part of this six-year plan?
About two tenths.
Could it be done rural rustically or not?
It, it could be. I mean, we could surface treat right down to the low water bridge.
And get 16 foot?
It gets tight as we get towards the-
You know, that might be a possibility we could look at is, with this additional funding, doing the whole road, see if it's possible.
Well, I think if you get close to the low water bridge and pick up, you know, all the residents, I think most people will be happy on that because it gives them a harder surface way to, you know, go out and figure out.
I think if you can do it up to the bridge, I mean, we might as well do it completely when there's no gravel on the-
The leaves, Miller's Creek, if we took it up to Cement Hot, what's the name of that hollow?
Smith Road, that thing is posted on, that should be a brown sign up there, and it's not. It's always been a green sign. So, you know, we're talking about here. It's seven tenths a mile from, from where you currently, and the reason that people beyond there don't want the road surfaced, plus that's where the school bus comes from. And obviously, the school bus, Gene, does more damage to the road than all of the car that it does.
Problem.
But this, this year's project could go on a hell of a lot.
So you're saying the possibility, look at adding seven tenths beyond the project we're getting ready to start?
Yeah, seven tenths will do that turnaround up there, you know, where we had a meeting yesterday about the stop sign that's on Oak Tree, and round that corner off. That's where the bus turn around and, you know, you never know what's gonna be 20 years from now, but I came to see the bus going beyond there because it would have a big land border road up through there. Plus, the folks on out there have boys that they don't want it paved, which is pretty unusual. One guy wants four foot pavement, sort of ride his motorcycle on it. I don't think you have a problem for that.
We can certainly look at those two.
Have you, what's you told us about Major Graham at the Bristol meeting? If it reaches that traffic count, will that open up different funding?
Yes.
Have y'all looked at it? Can it be rural rustic for total length?
All the way through? Could it be? We'd have to, we'd have to look at it, Joe. I know the project's on here is rural rustic, but now if we got a traffic count over 500, we could apply for high-volume unpaid road funds.
But what, what category does that put it in for design?
It's still rural rustic.
Oh, you can still keep it in rural rustic for high volume?
Right. We still will. It's just like Shoal Ridge, we'll still do it with our state forces, rural rustic concept.
You know-
Does that one, does that one get surface treatment or paved? Surface treatment. Same concept, just different funding.
Okay. But I think it's about, you got on that list, what's the total length of Major Graham? It should be about 5.4 or 5.6. There's no structures involved.
Yeah, we, we went back through and reviewed Major Graham, and it can be rural rustic. We just, I didn't get it on that.
All the way through?
Yeah.
So.
Just minor sloping, minor cut slopes. I don't think we got any real slopes.
And there's no structures involved.
When are we planning on doing, asking for the road count?
Your assistant said he starts taking road count in fall during, during pumpkin and Halloween season.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna try to do unless they, they tell me I can't do that, so. There was a little reluctance in the room when we made it Bristol about me trying to do that, so.
The road count is actually what now?
Eighty-nine.
Yeah, we, we know that's not like, and maybe it was on that day, but with the, with the people that are now chanting, you know, modern residents out there, beetles, being, I don't know how many houses are out there, but I don't think any of them have got one car. And they're in out there during the summer months, but the peak load is in October and November when it's a commercial. And there's not even any funding in Virginia for farm-to-market, is?
I don't know.
Eleven hundred acres pumpkins or eleven hundred acres pumpkins and corn. But if you go there, I don't know whether there'd be a pushback about it being rural rustic, but I know the traffic count is way, way up there in October, November.
So as far, it's something we'll look at and do what we can, but as far as adding new routes, I know Wilkins Lane, at some point at one board meeting, somebody mentioned Wilkins Lane. Yes, it is rural rustic eligible. What was the other one, David?
Sheffy Town Road.
Sheffy Town, it is rural rustic eligible, and we've got it marked on here. So I'm not sure where the traffic counts are, but-
We had some petitions. We have a list of those petitions, one. Can we get a copy of this Sheffy Town Road?
I was gonna say, I know there one's been pressing by the way.
The Sheffy Town, please?
Yep.
It's got a traffic count of eighty-one. It can be done rural rustic. Wilkins Lane, traffic count of ninety-seven, it can be done rural rustic.
So if you added the seven tenths of Miller's Creek, that's 105,000, you said 150,000 a mile. That really doesn't affect anybody's schedule all the way down under there. If you're fifty percent funded the year before. And Major Graham is way up there, so I guess it's there. What you're asking is- Take that. One point, give that back, $1.2 million for roads. Which ones have y'all, I don't believe it's, y'all recommend that?
Oh, there's a one, yes, on the side.
All of us. So, Hump Hall Road, Raccoon Road, which is over, off Dunson Spring, Pine View Drive. Is that Gary's Drive?
Which?
Pine View Drive. It's off Round 11, though.
Oh, 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 the one, the one that's driving me crazy is Mount Airy.
And I checked this morning, they're saying that even though it's frontage road, we can use these funds if, if that's-
Shadow Lake-
What was the traffic count on that?
Hundred and forty.
So the traffic count on Mount Airy is 140. It's not on here because it's not a secondary road.
Do what?
I'm interested in what-
It's a frontage road.
Paid your driveway.
Yeah, they're gonna pay mine.
The numbering system.
I've got the tree there.
Mount Airy Road goes from, from Lake of the River to-
It's not a frontage road. That's ordinary lake.
Mount Airy Lake Road, okay, all right. Mount Airy Lake-
Mount Airy Road's on the other side of the interstate.
Yeah, okay, that's the one. I understand, I know where that, but Mount Airy Lake Road then, I guess.
That's the one you get calls on?
Yes. Yes.
What route number's that?
Lake Mount Airy Road? Or Lake Mount Airy Road? It's on the Nick.
That's Route 676, it's on the second page. Got a traffic count of 112.
Well, wait a minute, let me, let me, let me-
No, the one you're looking at's on, on the next page, Jim.
The lady is sending me stuff and she says some attention to Mount Airy Road. I thought it was that.
I was thinking what we get most complaints on is Mount Airy Road. The frontage road.
So that goes out there and dead ends.
Yes. It's an unpaid frontage road, FO-15 is the number.
And, and a lot of Hensley's trucks and stuff come back and forth. Oh, okay, all right.
It's not on this list because it's FO-15 frontage road. This is secondary.
It, it just parallels the interstate.
But you can use these funds if you wanted to hard-surface that road.
The, yeah, the biggest thing for me is that somebody, when they, when they call, and I'm not, please don't take this as a criticism, but apparently, when these people call, especially this lady, she being called over and over and over, you gotta talk to your worst sympathizer in there. Matter of fact, this is what she said. She said, "I'm sending this in hopes of getting some attention to Mount Airy Road. You're a retreat, we've talked to everyone, and they're all telling us that we have to convince you to plead our case to the state." And then, I mean, this one. And so I asked her, I sent her back and said, "Who's telling you that?" And she wrote this. She said, "Individuals have told us that, that we had to tell you, or Morgan Griffith, and Bill Carrick, I have letters from both gentlemen, that more or less tell me that you are the only person that can convince the state to fix this problem. But more, I can't be the only person asking for our road to be chipped. I don't understand, I don't think you understand the money. All of us are wasting it, having to shell out because these out there are roads. You realize we're driving on soft treated roads all year. I'll never buy a new car because of the fact that it's gonna rust to the ground in about three years. It's sad that I have to go to all these different people and whine and cry just to get someone to do their job. I shouldn't have to tell anyone but you, my representative for this district. I didn't get any help from you, so I contacted everyone I could, and they sent me back to you. So the ball's in your court, Mr. Hausman. I'm being as nice as I can, but this is as old as time and said, that it's, has to come to this to get what you were paying for. If you're trying, then sorry, you're not trying hard enough." If you're trying, then sorry, you're not trying hard enough." I've tried to convince this, you know, this lady, you know, we don't have anything to do with roads other than putting them on the, on the six-year plan. But apparently everybody that she calls, whether it's at VDOT or the state or whatever, says, "You gotta go back to your board supervisors." Is there any way when people call that there can just be a brief explanation that the county doesn't maintain or spend money on roads? The only thing they do is just, you know, make a recommendation?
And in a sense, what she's being told is correct. She's wanting her road hard-surfaced, and the only avenue of that that we have is to put it on a six-year plan. And that is where we are here today, asking you all what road you want on the plan, so.
I understand that, and technically you're right, but the essence of it, I think, is that she is being told in such a way that she thinks that board supervisors are the ones that make all these decisions. And we don't. Matter of fact, all the six-year plan, all we do is make a recommendation. I mean, we don't tell you all, for certain. You may come up and say, "We don't have the money, or we can't do that one," or whatever. So I, all I'm asking is just a little consideration, you know, as far as when people call, that they get a, you know, an explanation, other than say, "Well, you need to call your board supervisor."
Generally speaking, when people call, what they're told, they wanna know, "How do I get my road paved?" Everybody else is, "I'm living and eating dust." We hear, you know, we hear the same thing you do. And even in this pamphlet, you know, what we tell them is, "The avenue that we go through is the six-year program. You have to get your road added to that list." We work in conjunction with the board of supervisors to prioritize roads that go on the list. So if you have an interest, you need to show up at the public hearing and let your board of supervisors member know of your interest, so.
Well, I'm gonna email or tell them the, you know, when the, you know, the public hearing is. But I guess, Jeff, what I'm saying is, I understand, I guess it's easy, you know, for people in Richmond or whoever, just to say, "Well, you gotta, you gotta talk to your board supervisor." But yet, we have very little power.
Well, a road don't go on the plan unless you agree to put it on there.
I know, but because you put on it, that means it's gonna get, you know, specific.
That's the only chance it's got, though.
I, I don't think...
I understand what you're saying. We'll do what we can to try to keep people off of you, but at the same time...
Well, I don't mind people, I, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to say, when I try to explain to them, they think what I'm doing is dodging the issue, and I'm not. I, I wrote a big long preface this morning to her, I was six-year plan. Matter of fact, I think I probably sent you some...
Yeah, I got a copy of it.
You know, how it works and stuff, but it's like, because I'm telling her, she doesn't believe that because other people know it. God convinced me. So anyway, if you can help on that, I would appreciate it.
You know, this pamphlet right here, "How do I get my road paved?" The key is to work together with your neighbors, your county's board of supervisors, and VDOT's Residence Administrator for the county to get the necessary right-of-way and funding needed to complete the work. So it's, it's a joint effort between us and you all, and we're the avenue that they come through to request their road be hard-surfaced, so.
I will, I will ever and over sure when the, you know, when the...
Public hearing. That might, that might be one that, you know, we might have an interest in putting on the plan. Can it be? Have we reviewed it? Do we know?
No, I'm not.
I'm pretty sure it can be. I have reviewed it.
So it probably costs...
It's not very far out there.
It's about a mile. It's mid-century. How do you drive? How? It's about a half mile past Four Lane, heading west, turn to the left. Just goes over the...
I can't read your... When you go off the Four Lane, gets to the top of the hill, it's really weird. As they say, you know, that was my rant, so.
Yeah, we've got a water line out there, Stephen.
Yeah.
Drive past our pump station, early.
I know it's mayor. Just working up on GIS to tell me where it was.
We've reviewed several of these routes, and, you know, we've put yes or no. They are or they're not rural rustic eligible. They, so are we more interested in the higher-traffic-count routes? And put them on in that order, or, I mean, if y'all have specific projects?
I got two. Sheffy Town Road and Wilkins Road, because they're the two, Wilkins Lane, they're the two that we've got petitions. And these people came in and complained about it, so.
A, a good thing, I would like to have the plan ready when I show up at our public hearing to where we can pass it, to where y'all can, to where we can pass it that night. We're kinda up against time, but if we can work together between now and then to get the routes we want on there would be good.
Gene, is that just three tenths of a...
Which one?
Wilkins Lane. For health...
It's not far down. It's about the same length as Nick's.
And I think Sheffy Town Road, I think it's, I wanna say it's like seven tenths.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just a mile, the two of them together.
So if we got ten miles of several of these that we could...
I think if people came in...
That's a whole lot of roads.
I think if people came in and complained about them, then, especially if they went petition, I mean...
Yeah. I agree with them two. And that's only two that we've had, I can't remember people that's come in that's wanted on the six-year plan except Greasy Creek, and that's not rural rustic, by no means.
I was gonna say Greasy Creek's, but there's no way we can do it rural rustic. And we've had complaints on Pope Road, but I don't know that it can be done rural rustic either.
So which two were you talking about, Tim?
Wilkins and, and the ones that we've had petitions on, Wilkins and what's the other one?
Wilkins, Wilkins Lane and Sheffy Town Road. Sheffy Town is seven tenths of a mile, and the other ones, somebody said three tenths?
Yeah, they've got Sheffy Town, yeah, they've got Sheffy Town split up into two sections here.
Oh, okay.
One section is 1.4, and then the rest of the route is 1.7.
Oh, okay. I thought it was longer than that.
Just, and I will point out, when I sorted this by traffic count, well, if one dirt road has two different traffic counts, it's gonna split them up on this list. There may be a Sheffy Town up here with a higher-traffic count and one on the next page with a lower traffic. There was no way I could have my cake and eat it too, so.
Okay, can you explain something to me? The list on the right, is that supposed to be the name of the road that you're gonna pave?
The comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Because I know, I know there's a couple of them on there that, that's listed, the names over there, but the road's already paved.
Which, which one, Paul and Hall?
It's paved from one end to the other.
We're, we're finding that on the...
Reviewing would say, well, they ain't no use in paving it since it's been paved, though.
Yeah, well, as, as we find those, we're just marking those pages so we can...
Okay.
Well, then can I recommend Mount Airy Road?
What, what might be, what might be a good thing is, if every board member, you know, if you've got projects that you're interested in having added, submit them, you know, in the next week or so. That'll give us the time to go out and review them and say, "Yes, it's rural rustic," or "No, it's not."
Well, I, and, and I, I thought that the lady was talking about, you know, Lake Mount Airy Road, but it's Mount Airy Road. So I have had other complaints about that, especially during, you know, the time when, uh, when farmers were cutting, cutting coal. Yeah, doing Hensley shit, and everything, but it's a nice wide, wide road level. I mean, there'd be, I'd start to say very good work. I mean, I, it, not a lot of, not a lot of extra work that would have to be done.
But all these roads got a Y. It's rural rustic. Y'all already reviewed them.
And I'll explain what is a rural rustic road. I know, Mr. Lester, you're new, and I'm gonna try to, I'll try to explain that without confusing you. The rural rustic road concept, basically you follow the same vertical and horizontal alignment of the existing unpaved road. It's minimal grade work. We're doing it with state forces. You know, you do a little bit of widening. At the end of the day, we, we desire to have a 16-foot paved surface, two-foot shoulders on each side, and if you've got a ditch, there's three additional feet for your ditch. And all the work has, has to take place within the existing right-of-way or prescriptive easement, which is normally 30 foot on an unpaved road. So if you take a 16-foot road, two foot of shoulders each side, there's 20 foot. If you have one ditch, there's 23 foot. That only leaves you seven foot for a cut slope or a fill slope. So there's not much extensive grading can go on to be a rural rustic road. To get above and beyond that, puts it into a construction category, which has to go to contract, and you move from $150,000 per mile to $2 million a mile because you have to buy right-of-way, and you have to have preliminary engineering, and the cost increased drastically, so. Rural rustic is a, a very good program, and we have been successful in getting a lot of unpaved roads hard-surfaced.
Jeff, on this, why is Hogback Road, you got four, four lines, why is they separated?
The twos and froms. That's, that's just the way it's programmed into the inventory system. The first one says it's from Groundhog Lane to Dutton Hollow Road, and then you've got the section... There's different sections of the same road, Tim. Lot of times they'll, they'll put these in inventory from intersection to intersection. They also assign, you'll see a number that says 3.8 to 4.03. Those are considered mile markers, just like what's on the interstate system. We have assigned mile markers on every road that's in the state system of highways, so.
So if you went down this list, this is traffic count, right?
Yes. This is sorted traffic count highest to lowest.
So if you added Wilkins and Sheffy Town, a mile of it, that's 1.8 miles. And you start down through there, Raccoon Run, .35, Millers Creek, .7, Shadow Lane. You can get way down through there, almost, if you don't do any of those except Millers Creek, except for the .7. And you say Dutton Hollow on here won't work as a rural rustic?
That's, we did a review last year, right?
Yeah. Going down through by those curves, and I guess...
It was often there, I know. But I get complaints on it all the time.
We could review it again and see if there's any way, so. Put the, put the slope straight up and down.
Don't see how you ever find any space there. Unless I'm thinking about the wrong road.
I think it may be one of those that would be possible to do partway coming from Smith County side. But, I think saving a mile for Mount Airy Road.
Where's the Mount Airy Road at on the sheet?
You know, out there.
No, I mean on the sheet.
It's not on there.
It's not, because it's a frontage road.
Oh, okay.
I have my notes here on Dutton. It's, basically, it's got a steep cut slope and steep fill slope, which, yeah, existing width is only 11 to 12 feet. So you have the cut slope on one side and fill slope on the other, which is gonna create, kinda like Greasy Creek, basically, same characteristics. And then there is, I didn't put how much, but there's a lot of fence that needs to be moved. And that's another thing for rural rustic, we need to work with the landowners. They would have to move their own fence, but we don't have the money in rural rustic project to move fence. And so on here, for shoulders, I've got no room for shoulders. And ditching, definitely have to cut, cut, cut slope and fill, fill side to be able to cut ditches inside.
Any of those notes re-plug, going all the way through?
Um, it's, it's .66 miles, so it's a little over a half a mile. And it's been about a year since I reviewed this, where I have to look and see if there's, like, like you said, a short entrance section that may be able to be done.
I, one of the, one of the people that I don't get complaints, I'm, not, when I say complaints, I don't, you know, but it's Jack Dutt. I think, once, coming from the Smith County side, once you get beyond his house, coming back toward the retreat, then it does, as, as you said, the bank comes down here, here's the road, and it goes that way. I, I think getting back to, yeah, his house might, might work, but I don't...
How far is his house from the intersection, from the beginning of Dutton Hollow? From, from the Smith County line?
It's on the other end.
Yeah, it's on the Smith County.
Yeah, I can go back and look at that. I mean, if we can do like a tenth or two tenths of a mile to, to catch his driveway, that's, that's a possibility.
Because it's, it's paved, Smith County is paved down through, you know, through that.
And one of the qualifications for rural rustic, it needs to have a traffic count of 50 vehicles a day or more.
Just one road, I'm trying to remember what sort of, what gentleman that always comes in, Pope Road. I didn't see it on here, and I was all for other reasons.
I do not know, but we can review that, and someone else had asked about Pope Road. We can review it and see.
How much to remove the Pope Road, it's not sure. How much trouble is that, sir? Yeah, the middle of it is.
It's just, just the middle of it's not surfaced.
Yeah, the bridge is not surfaced, man.
Probably two miles.
Is it ham from the coal bunch? Haven't used the coal bunch, man.
Yeah.
I guess it's about two miles.
May be farther than that. It may be three miles.
So Jeff, you want us to email you with recommendations, or what?
I'd probably, I'd probably get a list to Salal, and then let Salal can forward it on to me. Of roads you all have interest in, we can go out and review them and get an estimate, find out if they are rural rustic eligible or not, and get a grand list together, resubmit it to you all, and you all can see which ones you wanna put on.
Hey Jeff, I think you mentioned earlier, we've got room for about 10 miles of road.
If you go down through the lane, and the ones we've talked about only get you about four miles. So, I was looking at this list, the traffic count, if you're basing it off need, I think the traffic count is pretty important.
I do, you got a 10, 100 a mile, or whatever it is, on Pump Hollow Road?
There's another section of Pump Hollow on the next page.
That's right, is it off 21?
No, that's, that's right.
That's at the very end. So they had two different traffic counts, for whatever reason, Salal.
I know we've had complaints on that.
The, the others, the other traffic count was 125, and the section, the short section was showing up 427, so somebody may have been bouncing up and down on the hoes, I don't know.
So if I'm adding up right, we can get all the way through Pump Hollow Road plus the other three we talked about?
Pump Hollow Road would probably, I mean, it's basically graded.
Yeah, it's a...
It's built. All it needs is surface treating, pretty well. needs is surface treating pretty well.
Yeah.
You're looking at it...
Maybe give those gene horny bumps out over there.
That one would be a fairly cheap project because there's no grade work, you just shape up the stuff.
You get all, almost all the way through the second page.
I guess my interest is in, I, I know y'all have people that show up and petition the board and stuff, and certainly take interest in those, but if I, when I look at priority, I kind of go from traffic count, the roads that have the highest volume. That way, that way, we're taking the county's money and benefiting the most people, so that's, that's one way I like to prioritize it. But at the same time, you know, ten miles of road, we can get a lot done.
I agree with that to a point, but some of these traffic counts, I just question.
I mean, I can't get it to the right.
Oh, I know, I mean...
That's what I have to work with.
I understand that. I mean, there's one down in Cripple Creek that it's a dead-end road, and there's, I don't even know if there's anybody that lives out it, but maybe one or two houses now, and it's got a traffic count of seventy something, I saw a while ago. And then there's the gravel road that comes from Gleaves Road, up, basically up to the trash place, and I think its count was like forty something.
So, does that sound like a plan to, that we want to proceed with, to take the roads you have interest of having not put added and get into Salel's?
Yeah, I think we're submitting to Mr. Dalton, I mean, we don't need to submit over ten miles of road.
Well, I just want a mile gone because now. Once he's got, yes, and then get to the ten miles, and if you add the seven tims for Miller's Creek and a mile for Major Graham, still only six miles.
So we need, but some of them, they go out to go back and see if they're, they can be done in rural rustic.
I was gonna say, y'all haven't looked at all of them over there.
No.
I was just doing the guesses.
We really didn't anticipate, didn't anticipate getting to add ten miles.
Yeah.
If we get something added, yeah, rural, in, in the six-year plan, that doesn't deter where the money can come from, like, if you got this high traffic count on Major Graham, doesn't tell you, tell us rural rustic, put it on the six-year plan, which we're asking to do, that it wouldn't deter it from getting that much.
If, if we're able to get a over five hundred traffic count on Major Graham's road, then I can apply for the high-volume unpaid road funds. If it received that funding, then we could take it off of the six-year plan and use that fund.
Okay. So if it gets it on there, then you would just move it. So Salel, our request would be to try to get all of Major Graham on the six-year plan, and if he gets that high dollar road, he can take it off the six-year plan, so he don't need to be there.
Of course, if they pay Major Graham.
Yeah, Major Graham would do well with it.
Let's see, we're getting ready to do a half a mile, we've got a half a mile on the plan, right?
Yeah, next century.
I think it's almost two miles.
Eight what?
I don't remember. Any questions?
One point eight.
One point eight.
Andy, that's, something's wrong with that. It's almost five point six miles all the way through there, some little red curve.
Yeah. What I was trying to do is coming by Snowball's house, get it down to the mansion, which is about a mile or something.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get it past Snowball's house, which is on the...
Right.
But from that, we can find...
But then the next place where just those one house lives, back twelve something, it's a long, it's more than any one mile, dude.
No, we're supposed to do a mile from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have to just, I, I've gone through and checked that, and throughout the whole route, it's been a little crating, and maybe Pope Road, and rural rustic, and I'll have to remeasure because this, this spreadsheet here does not incorporate the whole route. I can see it's, it's on, it's just in a little few miles.
It's split up in different sections. It's twenty-two to twenty, I'm, I'm seeing three miles right here anyway, that's on this sheet, it's just in different sections. It starts out at a mile post twenty-one ninety-seven and goes to twenty-five, so that's three miles. Anyway, they, they have different traffic counts as you go through the road.
I can get that full length and give it to you, just shoot it, so I'll email, so you'll know what you're working with there on that.
All those people live over there, work all over, work north on eighty-one. If there's a point in there, it doesn't make sense to come all the way back to fifty-two and go get on interstate eighty. So all of it's pretty far, and if you live over there, where you work has a lot of difference. The other thing is when GPS puts all that traffic on, is Archer Road both, GPS has no conscience. It just says there's a road here, and it's a shorter route to eighty-one north. Signs have helped a lot, though, I don't think there's been any, you haven't had to go retrieve any tractor and trailer since they put a sign up there.
Take them down, I'm about to storm. No, but there is one thing, you're talking about taking the money off, there's one road on here, and I, I hope that you don't take nothing away from it, it's Crawford Road. There's six, six people on that road that's on the breathing machine.
Um, we have no plans at this point of taking any money. Any road's off the plan, we're, you know, we're looking to add plans, not take any off, but Joe just mentioning if Major Graham's qualified for a different funding, we could take Major Graham's off of this, and that would give us room to add more to it, so that's a big if, but it's something we will try.
We had a complaint this morning that I would really like to answer, but our apologies not to answer. Back to that, this St. Peter's project, that's all federal funding, so it doesn't affect the six-year plan, it doesn't affect, it's really, the road to Jean's house.
No, it don't even go all the way to my house.
It's broken nowhere.
It was a break to a magazine.
She did say that, didn't she?
I believe that project was put on the governor's priority list.
It was, it was a general assembly, when you got the RMI, they had so much, and that was, matter of fact, to get that, we had to change the designation of that from to collector road, I think is what they called it.
Right, major collector.
It was, it was just a minor collector, we had, we went through some gyrations to get it as a collector red, redesign.
That, that project, and just like the last two, that, the bridge project and the revenue sharing project, does not affect the six-year monies that y'all are allocating. And we always, you know, we can, I've been talking rural rustic, we can do projects that aren't rural rustic, but the problem, what the issue is, you go from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile to two or three million dollars a mile, similar to what Johnny Lane was. It was a construction project, and it was...
Three million dollars.
So...
Johnny Lane, three million?
I believe it was, was it?
It was one of them. I knew it was, but never found it.
I think it was...
I know a man with a skeet steer loader, if you turn him loose, he'll do a lot of damage.
Any questions?
Now complaints.
Let them have it.
I, I, I'll go first. I had a, a call on Crockett's Cove Road, and she'd go around that big curve part of the, there's a big hole, the road is broke off on the side.
Cut it down the other day.
Okay.
I wanted to get down to see this creek out there, and then in looking at that one, there's, there's more passing needs to be done after that.
And we, I got a call thinking that the potholes was, on Crockett's Cove Road was filled, and appreciated that. Joe?
Andy, y'all, is there any kind of agreement between y'all and the Forest Service? Who is responsible for the Peak Creek Road that connects upper Miller's Creek Road to Crockett's Cove Road? Is that purely Forest Service? Does it have y'all's number on it?
I don't have the check in the back.
I don't believe that's in the state system of highway.
Well, how, how do you get those people, like, they do everything, contractors don't they?
I don't know, Joe.
You know, if you go then, Miller's Creek Road, there's public road that goes through the forest, comes out over Gillette Canyon. About four years ago, they did an extensive amount of work with a loader and motorator on it, but this past winter with all the rain, it really devastated that connector road. And one of the things, you know, that I hope we can do is get the Sheriff's Department and the bus drivers to report to y'all downed signs. Somebody even intentionally wiped out the Miller's Creek Pedestrian Road sign. Could have been a truck backed over it, so a lot, a lot of people get lost on that road, and that, that's the first place they think it could turn around, but it's down.
Is it the route number or the, the wording?
Both, they put it the whole poll up.
The, the nine-one-one signs are maintained by the county, the county nine-one-one coordinator. All we put is route number signs.
Well, they were both on the same pole there, and the pole got knocked over.
That was Miller's Creek and what intersection?
That was there, near that right angle curve, right, right at the bridge, Joe. And what will you hear back from most people, Jeff?
The bridge?
About the bridge.
I talked to him right after our meeting, there's, they haven't made a decision on how they're going to reconstruct the bridge, what they're going to do at this point, but he was aware of the wider abutments, and I told him of the counties, as well as my interest in trying to utilize all that, that we can to get as wide a bridge as we can at the end of the project, so...
But they are going to use segments?
I don't know, I don't know yet, Joe. You know, we've talked about that, but they haven't come up with a, a plan yet of what they're going to put back, they haven't made a decision.
What, what's a standard, twenty-four feet?
I do not know.
I mean, what, what, what do y'all like to have?
Probably on a bridge, twenty-four feet, two twelve-foot lanes.
You know, just purely as a designer, as long as that beams are beams, are sitting on that bearing ledge, there's no way any weight can get to that outboard guard rail. You can get twenty-four feet, Mr. Dalton, I've looked at, don't you think you can get twenty-four feet and just keep all your bearing weight on the bearing notch that's there? I know that's what they do for a living, but I really don't see why there has to be an air bridge. I think you can easily get twenty-four feet, because if you think about it, your load weight of rear axle or the front axle, what do you see, about eighteen inches best you do, you know, of getting against the wall, so, you know, it, the, the load weight's not, well, you see what happens on a road, you can build it forty feet wide, everybody's still going to drive the middle of a gravel road. It's not making it any better how wide it is, they drive the middle. Well, not the same thing with those bridges. When they get to them, they hit the middle of the bridge, and that's where the traffic pattern is, that's where the load is. So I hope you'll keep negotiating with them, get us the best you can. But really, if we don't make it bridge wider, I'd hate to see us spend the money to, to take that bridge out. We know it's been load tested several times every year.
It is on the, you know, they inspect our bridges every two, three years, but it is on the structurally deficient list, so that's why it's receiving funding to be replaced. So, but we have made our interest known, and you know, we talked to the district administrator as well, when we met with him.
Did you talk to the design people?
I do not know. But I did, I followed, I followed up, and with the bridge engineer, he's the one that ultimately makes the decision, told him what our interest was, that we want as wide a structure. Of course, he's got a budget he has to work with too, but now they haven't finalized anything, once they do, you know, we'll, we'll see what they come up with.
But that work does happen, Russell, and not Rick, but...
The majority of it is probably decided, are you talking about who makes the decisions?
Yeah.
Probably the district bridge engineer, but in conjunction with central office, I'm sure, you know, he's got, he's got a boss too, so...
About, about ninety-four, this face river, if you get a hole in the river.
No, I wanted to thank Andy and his crew for us getting our resolution Friday, it's worked out, working well.
Gene?
You done, Corey?
I'm done. I'm sorry.
I would complain about St. Peter's Road, but I know that they're working on it to try to fix it, so therefore we can put up the holes they're making with their big old dump truck. It's awful. I had a complaint, I presume it's about the road, I haven't been able to get ahold of the guy, the guy called me, he's always calling and fussing something about the road at Sheffy Town Road. So can y'all check it and see if it needs scraping, gravel, or if it just needed the dust control, or, I'm sure it's one of the, well...
They normally like to, and dust control is one of those things, the more you do it, the more you're hurting the road in the wintertime. So we try to limit ourselves to application maybe twice a year, and you try to prolong it, you're looking at the end of, end of May, when we try to put down our first application, and spread it out to where two applications, you'll get the best use out of it.
Well, they, I mean, they have put some down on some of the gravel roads over there, so I don't know.
I hope they don't do too much. The, the good thing is, yeah, it will suppress, suppress dust, the bad thing is, when, when the roads go to getting wet in the fall and the wintertime, too much calcium chloride or, or any, for that matter, the road gets mushy a whole lot quicker, so. Things good and bad with it.
I was thinking there was another route, but I can't remember what it, what it was now. I guess that was it.
You got my email.
Yeah.
You don't have no road.
Well, I was trying to get ahold of this guy to find out what the problem was, but...
These, these...
I can just get mine, will you?
Do you have any kind of completion idea on the bridge repairs that exited?
No, I don't.
That's not in y'all's review?
That's managed out of the district bridge office, and I do not...
You know, you told us a while back that that's going to be a slur, and now, now it looks like that eventually they're going to expose that all the rebar and replace a lot of rebar, it's turned into a fast project. Don't know whether they have anything to do with it, but... Don't know whether they have anything to do with it, but the lights were down last week and we're all on caution. It seemed like the traffic worked a lot better. No, no accidents, any movement. Andy, we never did get our no-turn signs up there. But Valero, now it's at Sitco.
Yeah, we.
What killed, what killed those things?
I forwarded that to traffic engineers and they're looking into it and everything back running.
It's been a year.
Where is it at?
People have pulled out.
On the north side of the interstate?
Yeah, north side of the interstate. When people pull out where the bus station ramp is, or now it's a Sitco, Valero's gone out there. It seems like they're getting more business. But they pull out and turn back wrong way on one-twenty-one.
We put some signs up, right, right there, at that little, below the bus stop, there's a service station, convenience store. We put some coming out of the parking lot right there not to turn left. That's been a year or so ago when you asked about that.
Yeah, he had traffic engineer. Well, maybe we need to get the sheriff's department to hang out there because almost, well, you saw it happen.
Yeah, and there's also their one-way signs in the east as well, but they weren't paying any attention to those.
Well, that's, I believe, I believe that's what I'm saying, they wanted no left turn or something, we put one-way signs or something up, up roads.
That doesn't work.
Well, that's what traffic and engineering, that might be a good place to look at these placards in the roadway pointing up the road, you know, the paintings like we put on the interstate.
That's private driveway up to your line. You know, that, theirs comes up there to the markers. And these things are, I don't know why people think they can go against traffic like that, but some of them get on there and go all the way across the bridge unless there's an officer there that shows them the error of their ways. But right there from that intersection at that ramp, and you've also got East Lee Highway coming in. It's where the perpetual guard rail problem is. I think you got that fixed this time. As ready as to get around there seems to be working, but that, that's a pretty dangerous place for a head on.
Right.
And the no-turn, I, I think people understand that better than they do something that's over in the east.
Anything else for Mr. Russell?
You're not going to get too upset if we cut all the trees that's growing on the way in on McIsis Seventy-seven.
Y'all done some brush cutting through there last year, didn't you?
Yep. We're going to cut them down and push them up the hill or chip them.
Ready Mix Road there, how far does VDOT go from the intersection up Ready Mix Road?
Do we maintain, we don't maintain any of that?
None of it?
No.
According to the VDOT interstate plan, y'all, y'all pay for a hundred, almost two-hundred feet up through there and y'all should be maintaining. It shows up on the old plan.
We'll check on it, but.
Because right there, if you go between the gas stations, it's getting pretty rough.
Right.
Real rough.
Actually, that was paid before the gas stations and stuff was there. Gas stations came after the exit and everything was built.
It really needs, something needs to be done, curbs or something added through there between them gas stations to keep the trucks from just going wherever they want to go.
They gonna do that anyway?
Well, I know.
So let me know when you come up with something.
Build the curb that high, a wall.
We'll check on it, I, we had never have maintained in this, not in the state system highway.
I know it's, it's so far apart that we own, but it's awful rough right there between Mc, uh, what is it? Burger King and.
Right.
The parking lot for the trucks. But that's all I have. And thank you, Jeff, for coming and working with us and.
And we had, I didn't hear a motion to set this public hearing for, that you got laid there?
I would make that motion.
A public hearing for May the twenty-fourth at seven P.M. Have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes with one absent.
It's been bad if you came all the way up to waste in this town and didn't set a public hearing.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get ahead of the game the best I can, but, yeah, the quicker, if y'all can, just the quicker you can get me the routes you're interested in and we can get on them reviewing them and likewise, we'll be looking at the higher traffic count routes. We'll put everything together, yes, no, they can be done and then we can decide and see what we ultimately want to put on the plans. I thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Andy, did you make a note that we're going to look at both dump sites?
Yes.
Mr. McRober.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Dalton, I will ask this, I did have a, a letter that was sent to Mr. McRobert from, uh, Ms. White. Did you get that about Foster Falls Road? The residents up there was wanting a water line. How many residences up that, up that road?
No, I didn't get no water line.
Tracy won?
Um.
Tracy won?
Mm-hmm.
What do you know about it?
Probably passed the water stream and folks further down.
Your pass Crawford, uh.
Oh, Foster Falls is another.
Yeah.
Folks have asked for it. Well, it's nice and wide, it's worked out.
Well, we got something from the whites asking for water. Their intention is, I don't know if we've got approval to come down Crawford Road. We're working on that one that night. But on the whites itself, that's the one I thought to you about, we just put some pipe out there. Just one isn't there? One isn't there?
I got that Saturday.
On public works, I know it's not going to happen till you schedule it. If we get on with that drainage project while it's dry out down there, Max Mettis digging that diverting ditch. And I'd like to speak to Bill about it. I went back and measured and you were right, fifty feet is all the room we got if we stay away from those two structures that's all filled. You got draft and print or some kind of draft and you built it here.
Not really. We can figure it out.
Well, I'm asking you to help, the next time you're to root and build and look at that structure that's there. And if you do a sketch that it can take to the railroad or send to the railroad, it'd only be twelve feet and with a metal roof on it. But basically that same design, open structure, pole barn, eight, a roof. Which we could put a fifty by twelve in there.
They could have used it this weekend when they was having that carnival or whatever it was called.
Well, you look, this has been a joking matter, but if we put a, a treated timber around the bottom and fill the floor with sand, a lot of those small children down there will play in sand in there, of course. All of Max Mettis camps with a few. That thing could be used for a lot of different things. A lot of folks that come watch the volleyball games would prefer to sit in there in the shade when they're watching. That field is really used a lot more than most of the people here think it is, it's busy every day. But if you could make a sketch that would be something you could present to the railroad, you get their permission and then something that y'all can accept as a building permit for a structure. We're ready, we're ready, rooting for it to go and get built. If you let me know about that drainage project, I'll be glad to help. As long as I'm not tied up here.
Okay. Mr. Dalton, we have anything else? I know there's one thing we have to take here out.
Well, info package is next Wednesday, Tuesday is the Expo Center Business Day, four-seventh. Always good to walk through, nothing else, say aye to everybody. Chamber puts that on. Tomorrow we've got, tomorrow, Wednesday, Administrator Assistant, all the ladies will be gone for a couple hours down to the Wolfher House tomorrow, I believe. And lastly, we're in a big change over to Reach On Two. Mr. Reese can tell y'all about that, but we've appointed a, I guess a new superintendent. Then there's a new job description that'll be posted on our website later today for that job superintendent. And then we have a Expo meeting here when y'all are finished, right?
Yep. I was going to ask you about that, if we, if you still want to meet with me and Gene and Joe. We do have one other matter, a motion.
That's so long, but I forgot the name.
Mr. Farling, you want to state the motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to have a motion from the board that approves the confidential settlement to Mr. Wamerson and authorize Mr. Reeves to sign his confidential settlement agreement.
Recommendation from the county attorney, uh, motion made by Mr. Willis, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and then I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes six with one absent. Now, is anything else, Mr. Dalton, we need to bring for the board? I will tell the board, you've got more, another, Martha's give us another folder here. We need to talk about that some point in time, but not right now. But, uh, here and.
Let's talk about that in a second.
Okay.
Y'all need to set a time in recess and come back from the close session. Have to get back. Either before the next quarter meeting, we need to set a time so you can review all those together as applications.
Okay. We'd rather do it, rather do it at night or day?
Night.
Night?
I don't know. That's a dumb question.
Well, no. Uh, how about, I was trying to say, I got a meeting Thursday. Does anybody have anything on the fourth, May the fourth?
We're in, what's the day we're in Richmond?
I thought you told me the fifth, but is it a set meeting? Have we got a, a form of will?
Yeah.
Or maybe go verify, because I thought it's the fifth. But I, I'm probably wrong. I'll just go wherever I'm told.
Well, let's make it safe and do it on Tuesday, the third at, um, six or seven.
I'd, I'd rather do seven, but I don't.
Seven. Okay, well, recess until, uh, May the, no.
Will you be back then?
I won't fly into Charlotte until four-thirty that afternoon.
Well, that's plenty of time for you to get here about that.
Yeah, four-thirty.
Charlotte traffic.
Not as it sounds like.
Well, I mean, if they, when they come over, I mean, just jump out.
Yeah, how about, uh, did you, is it the fifth we go down there or the fourth?
Pulled it back up on that.
And I guess everybody's objecting on Friday, the sixth. Would object on Friday, the sixth? No.
Fri- Friday night.
Friday night, dude.
You going dancing?
I'll make something go on.
Cole's got a hot date.
Oh.
Random mule.
Says loading, loading, loading. Made a fifth at one o'clock.
So we'll meet Wednesday, the fourth, we'll recess Wednesday, the fourth, at seven P.M. Okay, any other business to come for the board? Any other business come for the board? Any other board member got any other business? Here and none? We'll recess until May the fourth at seven P.M.